Online. I have a response from, uh, F.
Raleigh, this is Thomas. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we ready to go?
Yes, Mayor, we're ready to go.
Good evening and welcome to the special city council meeting for August eleventh, two thousand twenty. We want to remind Victoria residents that they can watch city council meetings live on Southern link channel fifteen or one fifteen. On our city website at W W W dot Victoria T S dot gov forward slash V T V fifteen. Or on the city's Facebook page. If you wish to participate in the citizens communication segment of tonight's meeting. You will need to go through the video conference. We have set up this virtual fact to limit social gatherings and protect our citizens and city employees over in nineteen. Here's how to access the video conference during citizens communications. Visit W W W dot zoom dot com. Again, W W W dot zoom dot com. From your web browser, select in a meeting. Located at the top of your browser and input four, 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 five, seven, three, one, one, three. Again, four, 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 five, seven, three, one, one, three for the meeting ID. Select point followed by open zoom, then join with computer audio. Click on the icon labeled participants to access the option to raise hand at bottom of the screen. Once you click raise hand, our moderator will announce you by your username you selected. And that will be your cue to be speaking to counsel. Comment will be provided with audio only. Will not be an opportunity at this time to share your screen or any additional presentations. Please remember to silence all cell phones, visions, or other background noise so that we can clearly hear your comments. During the citizens communication segment of tonight's meeting. The five minute comment period still applies dead when citizens were here in person. Again, we ask that your comments be five minutes or less. This information also is posted on our website and at Victoria T X dot gov forward slash V T V. It is generally the practice city council not to respond comments made during this time. But city staff will be available to follow up as necessary. This time I will ask our city secretary to call the role.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Councilman Dela Garza. I do not believe he's on the meeting yet. Mayor Pro Tim Solis.
Here.
Councilman Bot Knight.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Young.
Here.
Councilman Lofgren.
Here.
And Mayor McCoy.
Here. I believe that is six out of seven members of council. Therefore, we take quorum at this time. And now please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. Mr. Garza, do you have any announcements for tonight?
Uh, no, sir.
Uh, well, before we begin, I would also like to welcome all citizens who have who have logged on for the meeting tonight. Seeing no announcements from the city manager. No public employee recognitions I asked for any items from council. I would like to reject and and express our gratitude for the governor who who stood Victoria today. Along with Chief Nim Kidd to meet our emergency operations people and, uh, first responders. And, uh, also, uh, people from, uh, citizen and, uh, and D T R hospitals and McNeil. To, uh, discuss, uh, what we need is a idea what they can do for us. So I wanted the governor, uh, for that visit today. Is there anything else in from items from council?
I have one.
Okay.
I want to thank, uh, Mr. Gill and the street department for reworking that entrance to, uh, um, Springwood. And hopefully next time it rains, we'll see if it'll it'll drain to the, uh, storm sewer. Thank you.
Any other items from council? Hearing none, we'll move on into citizens communication. Foot, if you if you can tell us if anybody, uh, raises their hand.
Yes, yes, Mayor, I have one participant who with their hand raised and that's, uh, Wesley Trailer.
Okay.
You're allowed to speak.
Good evening, Mayor McCoy and Council. This is Wesley Trailer with Trailer's. I want to thank you all for for allowing this this forum for citizen participation. Uh, here, uh, what we have before you is a public hearing, uh, in regards to the, uh, submission of a C D G, a community development block grant.
Mister Trailer. Mister Trailer?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes. Um, if you wouldn't mind waiting for a few minutes, um, that I am actually, um. Is a is is, uh, later in the agenda. So right now we're in the citizen communication. Where members from the public are speaking just on anything that they would like. Uh, we have a public hearing section that's coming up shortly and that's where I believe Katie in our office is going to be, uh. Uh, presenting that item and then the mayor will open it up for public hearing on that item. I apologize for the, uh, confusion on the setup.
Hey, I apologize as well. Thank you.
I apologize as well.
Apologies all the way around.
I'll apologize.
But we will hear you at the appropriate time. Thank you. Any interest, uh, Mister Food?
Mayor, there are no other, uh, citizens wishing to communicate.
Okay, here he is. Saying no further citizen communication will now come onto items with public hearings. Mister Gooch?
Yes, Mayor, the first item on the J C one tonight is a public hearing on the submission of an application to the Texas general land office. For a community development block grant mitigation grant.
And Mayor, I believe, um, Katie or Derek are we're gonna kick this item off, I believe.
If they would do that before I open the public hearing, I would appreciate. Ms. Conley.
Mayor, I don't see Katie.
I'm here.
Okay. I'll step back and let Katie.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, for this public here, I wanted to let you know that projects funded by the C B G M I T grant will help the city increase resilience to future disaster. And reduce or eliminate long term risks. The city qualifies for up to one hundred million in funds through two programs. And this hearing is a prerequisite to submitting an application to give residents a chance to offer their feedback for inclusion in the application. And I think maybe now would be when Wesley would need to say his piece.
Okay, well, I'll wait for that for public, uh, any comments from Mister Farah? In that I will now open a public hearing on this matter.
Okay. Mayor, this is Wesley Trailer. I'm gonna try this again and and hope that I landed here on the right item. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, well, good evening. Uh, Katie set that up just just brilliantly. What we're here today, uh, for is to to basically have a public hearing, uh, regarding the submission of a Texas general land office. Um, community block grant, uh, mitigation application. Uh, this application is is early on in the process. It is due October twenty eighth. Um, this is the part of the application process, um, where we encourage that public input, uh, to the creation of the application. Um, this is one of the requirements of submitting, uh, an application for any community development block grant funds, whether the general land office. The Texas Department of Culture, uh, or other C D B G funding source agencies, uh, throughout the score of the nation. We are looking to see if we have any, uh, citizen participation, uh, with regards to this item at this time. Would love to know if anybody has called in, um, to ask any questions, uh, regarding the submission and application to the Texas general land office. For a community development block grant mitigation grant.
But are there any other citizens in line to speak?
No, Mayor, there are no other.
With that being said, uh, certainly still would like to to encourage citizen participation, um, by way of public comment to the city. We'll also have, uh, another, uh, chance for citizens to provide input on this application in the form of an open comment read. Um, that will be set a date, uh, and will also be advertised in newspaper and on the city's website. Um, people will have advance notice, uh, for that opportunity as well. Um, and certainly thank you all for your time this evening for this public hearing.
Thank you, Mister Trailer, and hearing no further citizens in line. Uh, I'll ask once again, Mister Food, is there any citizens signed up who have raised their hand?
No, Mayor, there are no, um, citizens wishing to speak.
Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on the matter.
Thank you.
So acquire acceptance of the report. Do I entertain a motion for that?
I move to approve of C one.
Second, second.
Been a motion and second to approve item C one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move on now to city managers' report there since there is no consent agenda.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna try and, uh, control this PowerPoint presentation for my iPad. So let's see if this works. Uh, so first of all, I'm sure you noticed on the agenda that we moved up the city managers' report and this is basically for, um. Uh, it, we think it's more appropriate for you to be reminded of the budget overview prior to having conversations. About the tax rate, part of having conversations about the public hearings and in that way it ties everything a little a little better together. Um, I want to start off by. See if this works. Okay, so what you're gonna see is very similar to what we presented in in June and and I'll specifically focus on highlighting some of the differences. Uh, but as a reminder, we wanted to try and and build a a budget that was based off of feedback from the community, from council. And frankly, just our mission, COVID obviously impacted our ability to do this as as thorough as we wanted to initially. Uh, nevertheless, uh, there was a few things that did happen, um, that confirmed what the goals and priorities are of council. You may recall that in December, council confirmed the goals in the Victoria twenty thirty five plan. Um, that it was extremely helpful for us. Um, obviously through conversations with myself and some of our meetings, I I gathered some of your input. Um, we also, as a reminder, distributed a survey. To our employees, um, about a year ago to really give us a sense of their thoughts on where we are with some of our internal services and and. So some of the results of that survey were taken into account in the proposed budget as we look to become more more of a twenty first century organization. Which is what a lot of the employees, um, wanted and want, quite frankly. And so all in all, we put we put the budget together. Um, the numbers that you're gonna see are a little bit different than the ones in June. Um, Councilmember Lofgren was was very great at pointing out in June that that in that initial budget did not account for some of our special funds. Only some of the grant related funds. And so the numbers that you see tonight incorporate those grant funds and that's why you'll see a higher amount. Um, but for purposes of twenty twenty one, the proposed expenditure budget is about just shy of one hundred and forty six million dollars. This is obviously an increase to to last year. Um, and obviously our revenues are also, um, represented here as an increase. Keep in mind that this is an all in budget and as we go through this presentation, we'll break down the different elements of it. And you'll very clearly see that a big reason why the budget is greater is for items non associated with COVID, non associated with general fund. And so to help with that point, I want to start off with, um, the revenue. And so in June, the budget that that was distributed in June and presented in June only had about one hundred and twenty million dollars in revenue. And you see that once we add the special revenue funds which are associated with grants. That that in itself increases the budget significantly by close to sixteen million. Um, and so the bulk of the increase is associated with those grant funds. And for sake of being transparent, we also included some specific details on some of the other minor adjustments. Um, sales tax is a big one. Uh, you'll see there that we adjusted our sales tax revenue, uh, by an additional eight hundred thousand dollars and we'll have a slide where we'll talk about that. Um, some of our other highlight items are are with an asterisk. Some of those again are associated with a grant specifically the COVID nineteen grant. And then we also, um, did not fully account for the full contribution from the Marsha Shanklin Foundation, um, back in June, and so we've corrected that. One of the elements here that, um, I want to point out that might not make sense right now is the building and equipment services fund. Or the department building maintenance internal charges of one hundred and sixty four thousand. You'll see that on the expenditure front as one hundred and sixty four thousand and in essence, canceling out. And so that's a pretty straightforward just internal move, um, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. So big picture, this is what our revenues are looking like. You'll notice right off the bat that the orangish color, which is representative of special revenue funds. Is the big difference. And so you'll notice that in fiscal year twenty, that only accounted for just shy of four percent. And that skyrockets to about thirteen percent. And really because of those special revenue funds associated with grants. And so you'll see that that difference is about six point five million dollars just for that. And really, at the end of the day, that's the biggest difference, um, between what was presented in June and what was presented, um, as part of the fiscal year twenty budget. Let's see if this works. Okay. So on the sales tax side, um, you may or may not recall that in June, we actually were, uh, envisioning our sales tax being down by close to one point. Um, seven million dollars for next year. And so we're training a lot better as we're now only projecting a decrease of about nine hundred and sixteen thousand for next year. However, that's still, um, significantly less than where we were, I guess, pre-COVID in twenty nineteen. And so you'll notice on on these, um, slides here that where we were in twenty nineteen was just north of seventeen million. And what we're projecting in fiscal year twenty one is just north of fifteen million, which represents a difference of about ten percent. And so even though we're doing better for this year, um, we're obviously still anticipating a decrease. And it'll be a matter of time before we go up to twenty nineteen levels, which we envision happening over the next two or three year period. Some of the other elements that are contributing to our increases in in revenues are reflective of the V S T D C proposed budget. Um, I hope you received the V S T D C budget that I distributed via email on Friday. But that budget will come before you next month. But in that budget is are some transfers to us for administrative services associated with a director of economic development position. And you may recall that we also added a grant administrator position, which is being paid out of V S T C by a fifth. Um, we also are now accounting for the transfer from the COVID grant fund. Um, as well as a slight increase in property tax revenue associated with just just valuations. Uh, we are proposing in in the document that you will receive, keeping the same tax rate as we had last year. Uh, but even doing so, it would generate a little bit of more money. And we'll get to that a little later when Gilbert talks about the tax rate. We also have a presentation coming up where Gilbert will take a deeper dive into our praise values. But this is just the snapshot. You'll notice that at the end of the day, after you take into account, um, exempt property. And even some of what's under protest or even some of the frozen values that at the end of the day, our net increase is just north of one percent. That's close to nothing, very flat. Um, and again, we'll talk more about that when Gilbert presents that item. Some of the special revenue funds that are that are associating to some of that increase, um, are associated to the COVID nineteen fund as mentioned. Um, but also related to the cops fund, which is adding four police officers. And so as a reminder, that's an actual grant. And so it'll take a few years for us to completely see that in general fund. Um, and so it's being accounted as a as a special revenue fund. We also, of course, have the motel tax fund. Um, you may recall that in June, we were actually projecting a decrease of about a third in our revenues. Now we're projecting about a fourth. And so it's a little better, but at the same time, it's it's still a significant hit, um, to that. On the positive side, in terms of finance, finance speaking, um, boot fest isn't happening and so we adjusted for that as well. N R C S fund, that's the grant program that's that's helping with the erosion project over at Riverside Park. Even though physically that project is nearing its completion, a lot of the paperwork is still pending and so that project is carrying over into next year. The big one, though, is an increase of ten million, which accounts for many of the grant programs that John Kaminsky started, um, overseeing. And then Derek is now involved with and now Katie too, to a certain extent, which are all associated with Harvey. And so some of these programs are the home buyout, uh, lot program, floodgate replacement project, some generators here at police station, city hall, at the community center. Some stormwater pump station projects and some hurricane shutters that are looking to be installed at the library. All of those projects together is ten million and so that significantly increases, um, where we are with it. As a reminder, during fiscal year twenty, we finished paying off, um, the bond associated with tech thought, and so that's coming off the books. And we also, uh, decreased, um, our contribution on the capital side. You may recall that we, uh, made a recommendation to delay talking about capital improvements. And so that's decreasing those transfers associated with that, not only from the city side, but also from V S T D C. On the expense side, very similar structure, what was presented to you in June totaled expenditures of about one hundred and twenty nine million. But that also has increased because of the special revenue funds that that we've been talking about. Um, some of the other minor adjustments are below. The one that I want to bring, um, or make a comment on is the payroll and T M R S. Uh, we made some some adjustments to overall payroll because of some promotions and some other elements that we're trying to correct. But also, you're gonna hear from Thomas after my presentation on our proposed reorg for his department. That'll increase or elevate one of his existing positions, um, to an assistant city attorney. And so that's contemplated in the in the corrected or updated version of the budget that you have in front of you. You'll also notice that we already incorporated the one hundred and thirty five thousand that council approved last week to go towards outside agencies for the hot, um, allocation program. Very similar, whoops. James, can you go back? Thank you. So very similar on the expense side, which the biggest difference is the special revenue funds which are associated with grants. And so you'll notice that that alone makes up six million of the of of the of the increase. This thing kind of went crazy on me. I think you need to go back a few slides, James. There you go. Thank you. Um, on the general fund specifically, we've already mentioned this on the revenue side, so I won't spend too much time. But obviously I think it's important to note that we are adding four police officers, even though the majority of that's being paid for out of the cops grant. Even though the majority of it's being paid out of the cops grant, you know, we don't technically have to accept that grant. And we don't technically have to commit ourselves to funding those positions long term. But obviously we value law enforcement, um, within the organization and our community and that's a top priority for us. And so it was important for us to accept that grant. And so we've added that. Um, I mentioned that we also added the one grant grant writer position that is being that is being split within several funds. Uh, five funds specifically, and so out of the general fund, it's twenty percent, V S T D C's twenty percent, and some other funds are also covering twenty percent. I mentioned also that the V S T D C budget includes a transfer to the general fund to help with, um, hiring a director of economic development. And so that's included in there. Um, and I already mentioned what's what Thomas will present about associated with his department. Um, as you all also know and may recall from the June presentations, all the departments and all of our expenditures are increasing for health premium contributions. Uh, you may recall that Gilbert presented, um, talking about the need to properly fund our premiums. And how the city organization is absorbing those that increase or or filling that void as opposed to passing it on to employees. And so all of the departments saw an increase associated with with health premium contributions. One of the things that we did or a couple of things that we did to be creative with the general fund budget, um, leading into the June presentation was think creatively about elements that could be funded from another source. And so one of those was our transit program. Our transit program has historically been funded out of the general fund, but we actually, uh, recommended that that come out of V S T D C. And the V S T D C in their proposed budget that will become in a council accounts for that. Um, we also are seeing last expenses next year associated with professional services. There were a lot of projects that were funded last year from the street assessment study to drainage master plan. Um, there was an I S O report that the fire department did. Some of those are carrying over. Um, but nevertheless, those funds were allocated last year and so that's why we're seeing a decrease in in new allocation of professional services. And I've already mentioned several times about the decrease in capital construction fund transfers due to us just wanting to delay that conversation. Um, and there were some major projects that were completed this year, such as the fire station is actually in the works, but the fire station project was was budgeted in fiscal year twenty. The library project was completed. Hopefully some of you got a chance to do that. And some of you may recall that there was a multi-year deal to pay for a large Motorola radio upgrade project. And so that's falling off the books and that helps us as well, uh, create a balanced budget for next year. Um, we obviously recently took over the main street program. And so we're, uh, recommending funding the main street program out of the motel tax fund to a greater degree than had been done in the past. And so hopefully you recall that presentation from Danielle. Uh, but some elements are also coming out of the V S T D C budget. Uh, V S T D C adopted a plan of work that accounts for more involvement in downtown. And so they're actually, uh, uh, in their proposed budget, uh, proposing they help pay for a downtown maintenance program. Which is really just to help with some of the beautification aspects of downtown and some of the infrastructure maintenance of downtown and also a downtown facade program. Some of you may recall that the city historically has had a historic preservation type of grant program. But unfortunately, that hasn't always been funded and has been so focused on the historic preservation piece. That we maybe had lost sight of what truly is preventing somebody from from doing work downtown. So the new downtown facade program will be centered more around some of those items that sometimes are cost prohibitive for somebody to develop down. So the new downtown facade program will be centered more around some of those items that sometimes are cost prohibitive for somebody to develop downtown. Or upgrading the building to to be up to code. Um this program would be a reimbursable grant program. Um and Danielle has all those details in case you have any questions. We had also recommended some funds for a Christmas tree downtown. Uh we wanted to really step up our game as it relates to our Christmas festivities downtown. So we allocated some funds with the intent that we would get sponsorships and really only use the budgeted money in case we need to. And fortunately, that is working out for us. We already have a verbal commitment from H E B to contribute forty five thousand towards this Christmas tree. They more than likely will spread that sponsorship over a couple of years. And so we would have to front some of that money. And Danielle just recently started a fundraising campaign for additional sponsors that hopefully fundraised the rest of 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 the cost of the tree. Uh we estimate that the cost of the tree would be close to ninety thousand dollars. And so clearly, H E B would be paying for half of that. And and because of that, it they would receive naming rights in exchange for that high of a sponsorship. But hopefully, other businesses in town uh contribute to that cause as well. And as mentioned earlier, council recently approved a hundred and thirty five thousand for hot funds. And so that's included um in there as well. Um because of the potential hit to our motel tax fund of about a third. We significantly decreased the amount of funds associated with capital improvement projects. Um you may recall that in years past, we have used the motel tax fund to assist with improvements at Riverside Stadium. Or even at the community center. And so we really dialed that dial that back down uh to help us get through COVID. Um and as I mentioned earlier, with Boot Fest being canceled, obviously, we're gonna save that money. Um and we've already talked about the cops grant program. I've already talked about these, so I'm not gonna repeat myself. And obviously, on the expenditure side, it's also reflective of of the revenues that are coming in for a lot of these grants. Again, I'm not gonna repeat myself. Um y'all are familiar with the fact that um on the expenditure side, we're seeing decreases due to. Um not funding as many C I P projects and paying off tech stock bonds. Um and I've already talked about some of the other items as well. On the utility fund is no different, seeing increase in city health premium contributions. There's a lot of maintenance that we need to do a better job of. And so this budget does account for increased investment in. You know, little things, replacing valves, cleaning wells. Uh we really wanna make sure that that we're more proactive with some of these maintenance elements as opposed to reactive. And so this budget accounts for that. Um probably the the biggest things associated with the utility fund are the fact that um we're killing two birds with one stone. By recommending the purchase of a of of a new vacuum truck. Because the replaced vacuum truck will transfer over to our streets division. To hopefully start, or not hopefully, but to start a uh program to clean out our storm drains. A very similar to what the utility department has done for the sewer lines. Um but we really have never had a program to focus on the storm water drains. And so we're intending with that with that vacuum truck that'll transfer over to start doing that. Um we also um are proposing that we. Spend some of that money on a new project, which is a wastewater screen project. And so even though some projects. Are not taking place due to COVID, we felt that was a high priority item since it helps with water quality. And so we added that into the budget. Um and everything else is pretty straightforward. Y'all are familiar with A S R projects, the V S T D C funds that's in there. Um that last bullet, I don't wanna cause confusion. Um it's an increase in the general fund transfer simply because the fund size is growing. We're not actually changing the percentage amount of the transfer. Um but when you're comparing number to number, it is an increase because of the increase in the fund itself. One of the biggest things to highlight on this page is the fact that community appearance is shifting over to the environmental services fund. Uh you may recall my earlier comment that we got very very creative with trying to fund general fund operations from different funds. And so this was one of those creative elements that we did. These are pretty straightforward. A lot of this was talked about in June, which was just some of our changes to. Uh establishing a fund for building and custodial services. And you may recall a lot of the conversation about increases in I T infrastructure, software infrastructure. And so a lot of the internal service funds are reflective of that. Some of the special uh projects that are coming down the pipeline are obviously included in the budget if it were so. But if not, it's still important that you're aware of. So we're in the middle of working on a variety of different master plans. And so you can expect over the next month or two for us to bring forward those recommendations to you on awarding the contracts to some of these firms. We literally are in the middle of contract negotiations with firms for the downtown master plan, uh drainage master plan. Um and we're about to start on the parks master plan and thorough master plan. And so all of those I envision coming to council by the end of the year. And so just be prepared for that. The street assessment study is is literally finalizing itself this week or next. And so that should come to council in September. So that you you all can finally see some of that information. At that same time, we'll provide more details on how we plan to approach the C I P program and the development of the C I P. And so that will be presented in in September with the street assessment study. We also wanted to specifically highlight how much money is in the budget associated with C I P and specifically streets. There's a lot of chatter about our investment on capital improvements going down. And it it is in the sense that we didn't add new projects, but as we mentioned in in May. There were a slew of different projects that were added during the fiscal year that we felt it was important to put do a quick timeout. And so if I were to compare, for example, this budgeted number of fist of of eighteen point eight five million to previous years. Last year was twenty million, year before that was sixteen million. And so at least from a budget standpoint, uh we're fairly staying fairly consistent with what we have budgeted in years past. And I'm not gonna read each line. You you see there that we're posing two point four million in street maintenance programs. Um and there are some uh street reconstruction and utility projects that are also scheduled to take place. You probably don't recall this, but when we were having conversations about. Uh a neighborhood development on the south side close to Caterpillar Cypress Grove. There was conversation about Lone Tree Acres, and we had actually allocated four million dollars from the text that overpass fund. To address the Lone Tree Acres neighborhood, the drainage and the street. Uh we haven't revisited that project in a while. But it's in there, and the four million dollars are still in there for that project. And some of these projects were carried over from previous years. Again, I'm not gonna go through each one. Um down at the bottom, though, I will mention that we incorporated some parks projects as part of C I P. Um again, we wanna try and emphasize that a C I P is much more than just utility and street projects. And so we want to slowly but surely incorporate other large investments into the C I P conversation. And this next year, we hopefully will receive a grant to help with the duck pond. And so whatever matched dollars would be associated with project are included um in next year's budget. And a splash pad for Riverside Park. You may recall when the city uh entered into a partnership with People Fund. V S T D C committed to um funding half a million dollars for a park project. And so in the V S T D C budget, you'll see the half a million dollars for that same splash pass splat pat splash pad project. As well as contributions from private foundation that that helped make that up.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On that splash pad project, does it make sense to wait to have a parks master plan completed?
That's a great question. Um I think in I think in some elements it does. I think the parks master plan will help identify uh location. I think the parks master plan will help identify the scope of the splash pad. Um obviously, a splash pad can be, you know, just water coming out of the ground, or it could be something that actually has. Play amenities, water features, you know, that sort of thing. And we do know that a parks master plan will solicit community input on priorities and what they would like to see. And so I I do think there's value in it. And so we can wait for that. But what we were envisioning was at least allocating the funds and sort of getting that aspect out of the way. And so even if it's something that happens later in the fiscal year, or or even if it's a project that carries over from fiscal year twenty one to twenty two. At least that fun, that money has already been allocated. Okay, I hope that helps. Okay, some of the other special projects uh initiatives are, of course, a big one, the combination classification study. That we embarked on earlier in the year. Um Gilbert, Cheryl and I gotta see a draft of that this morning. Um it's still a work in progress. Uh but obviously, that was a big priority for us. It's no secret that we haven't, we have some employees that are falling behind market. Um and so we wanna wrap that up as soon as possible and hopefully have a conversation with council about establishing. A first phase for that compensation and classification program. Um and we'll talk a little bit about that. Um later, when we talk about the tax rate, because as of now, it's the opinion of of and of the city staff. That in order to fund a phase one of a compensation classification program. We would probably have to have a conversation about the tax rate and our revenues, because right now the budget is just so flat and so thin. Um that it really wouldn't allow for for a program without doing so. However, we are wanting to prioritize as much as possible our first responders and those associated with COVID response. And as part of the three point seven million dollars that we can leverage from the CARES Act. Uh we are formally establishing a hazard pay program that we can retroactively make effective beginning in March. And so I wanted to provide some of those details to you so that you are aware of it. Um we're slowly but surely rolling out that information to the employees that would benefit from this. But the big ones are, of course, police and fire. Um this hazard pay program would equate to two hundred and fifty dollars per pay period. And would would again retroactively begin in March and run through the end of December. That's twenty one pay periods and and would add up to more than five thousand dollars before taxes come off. That would go towards um our first responders and others associated with COVID response. The way that we envision uh paying this out, if you will, is to do a one lump sum payment in September. And then the other in January. You may recall that the CARES Act COVID grant program has to. Uh only apply for expenditures through the end of this calendar year. And so we can only run this program till then. I wanted to include some estimates that you get a sense of the magnitude of what this is costing us, regardless of whether. Regardless of the fact that it's getting reimbursed. So in total, we estimate that this hazard pay program for police and fire will cost us roughly one point seven million dollars. To put that into perspective, for those that are familiar with the step program that the city has had for years for police and fire. Is if we were to fund a step, um which on average equates to about a three percent increase for uniform personnel. And on top of that, add a three percent for uh personnel in police and fire that don't fall within the step program. That's about seven hundred thousand dollars. And so we're spending a million more on this hazard pay program. Uh just to kind of put that into uh perspective on 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 that piece of it. One of the things that I wanted to also be transparent with you about is just some of the things that are going on this year. That may not necessarily impact our fiscal year twenty one budget, but will impact future budgets. And so this mainly is on fire department side. Um we were, we didn't, we felt that we didn't quite touch on this to the extent that we probably should have in June. Uh and so we wanted to include this um in today's presentation. Um but we are gonna proceed or we're recommending to proceed with replacing some equipment with the fire department. And instead of just purchasing them outright, since we don't have the cash, is entering into a lease program. But because of the timing of everything, those first payments on that lease program wouldn't be technically due until fiscal year twenty two. And so we wanted to be transparent with that with you and 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 share that information. We also obviously are committing ourselves for the long haul on this cops grant program. And so I wanted to also convey that reminder that that's gonna be an expense that's gonna come to us in fiscal year twenty two um and beyond. And then of cour- and and of course, to be determined is what we decide to do on a compensation classification program. Um all this is important to keep in mind, because what we wanna be better at is long-term financial planning. And if we're gonna have conversations about tax rates, revenues, things like that. I think they need to come in the context of how we foresee the budget and the operation growing over time. As opposed to just taking it one year at a time. And so hopefully, over time, we start being better at this. So that we don't put ourselves in positions where we have to make drastic cuts, because we didn't adequately plan for some of these elements. I could tell you that Gilbert and his staff do a really good job of doing this. Um but we oftentimes don't do a good job of keeping council in the loop of it. Um so that when the time comes, um there aren't any surprises for you or the public.
Mr. Relative to the police fund. Uh historically, we've been running without a full apartment, fully staffed department for years. This an effort to get us really to fill all the positions that 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 we want filled in our police department?
So the hazard pay program applies for our existing personnel.
For for the adding of four new officers.
Yeah, the adding of four officers is to help us simply just have more troops on the ground. But quite frankly, um adding the four positions doesn't really benefit us unless we fill them. And so. Having the additional funds for the four positions help us in that if we do get the demand. Of folks interested or applying, that we have the resources for it. And so that helps in that perfect scenario. Um but obviously, we haven't even been able to be fully staffed with the number of positions that we have now. And so adding those four is only potentially gonna add to the struggle of filling those vacancies. Um this is why we want to uh retain our police officers, because we don't wanna make the issue any worse. And so we're hoping that that the hazard pay program will hopefully help with retention. And if we do have a conversation about a compensation uh program in fiscal year twenty one. Um it would be my recommendation to focus on first responders as part of that first phase. So that hopefully, we can actually fill those positions. We don't have all the data finalized in a format that I could share with you tonight. But again, it's no secret that we're behind on on compensation for a lot of our positions, and that includes police and fire. And at the end of the day, we could probably all agree that uh police and fire and and the uh public safety aspect of what we're here to do. At the end of the day, is one of the most important elements. And so we do need to have a conversation about that. And hopefully, council is open to have the dialogue, so that at least it provides us an opportunity to provide those details to you. So that you see black and white, maybe how far behind we are as it relates to some of these positions in police and fire. Because everybody needs to know where we are. It's not. Rocket science why we've struggled to fill those vacancies. There's just other agencies that just pay better than us, just point blank.
My perspective is is changed a little bit in the last five or six months. What what our first responders actually do, uh especially in this COVID response. It's amazing how resilient they have been and the duties that they've taken on. That aren't typically associated with what you would. Define police duties. I was really amazed at their at their response and the professionalism and the things that they did and did so well.
Agreed, agreed. So just to kind of wrap this up, just as a reminder, uh the overall proposed budget totals close to a hundred and six million on the expenditure side. In terms of what's next, we do have a regular council meeting next week. And so if council does have any uh specific topics, departments, divisions. That you want us to kind of take a deeper dive on or discuss, I would recommend that uh we do that next week. I have one-on-one meeting scheduled with, I believe, all of you towards the end of this week. Where I will ask if there are any areas that you would like to discuss on the eighteenth. That'll really help us, you know, line everything out for the rest of the calendar. Obviously, council will make a decision tonight on the tax rate. Um and and if council um does wanna consider. Uh potentially increasing the tax rate to have more money to do more things. Um we can discuss what we might be able to do with those funds on next week as well. Outside of that, we do have a special council meeting on August twenty seventh. Um and obviously, you're familiar with the process here on out. Um I will mention that in September, uh we do plan on having a conversation about some of our policies. I'm count, I know that council member Lockren has brought up um a desire for us to be more intentional with. How we utilize some of our overages um associated with our. How we utilize some of our overages um, associated with our fund balance. And so we have done some research and have found some um, examples of how other communities kind of tackle that. And so we'll be having that conversation with you in September. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Um, happy to answer any questions now or when we meet this week. Um. If there are no questions, uh, next up would be Tom talking about his proposal for his department. And then after that, we would swing back to Gilbert uh, delivering the certified tax rule information. And I apologize if this wasn't really smooth. It's kind of challenging to try and figure this thing out on, on Zoom. And it's weird not seeing you all in person.
I'll second that. Uh, Mr. Raina, or I'm sorry, Mr. Goose, I think you're a.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As Mr. Garza has already told you, we are uh, I, I have been reexamining the workflow within our department. Uh, last week I got to congratulate Katie Connolly on her promotion of my department. Um, that created a vacancy and we have been looking at the best way to backfill that vacancy. And tonight I'm recommending to you that we backfill her legal assistant position with a second assistant city attorney. And I wanted to go over briefly their justification for that recommendation before I talk about what it's going to cost. James, you can go to the next slide. James, can I drive from here? I don't know whether I can or not. I'm sorry, I don't see the presentation.
You'd like to um.
Thank you. This is the uh, number of files handled by the legal department going back as far as I have records. Um, there's a couple of takeaways from this slide that I will just want you to see. If you look at about twenty twelve, you see that there's a huge transition from a much lower level of workflow to a. A period where we plateaued at what we would call a new normal, averaging about thirteen hundred files a year. Um, but the primary takeaway from that is that that workload has been uh, very difficult for our department to manage. We have been working hard on efficiency manage, um, management techniques to try to manage that workload. And I'll talk about what some of those are. But even more so, I want you to notice the very last uh, data point there. Fifteen hundred and ninety-one files last year in twenty nineteen is a historical high. Um, but it's only half the story. Um, that number, just the increase is falling two-thirds on the attorney desks and only one-third on the support staff desks. And so in order to address that, it's the attorneys who are feeling the, the weight of that increase. Furthermore, I didn't show you twenty twenty year numbers because these are all calendar year numbers, not fiscal year numbers. And the calendar year twenty twenty, as of the first half of this year, even with the city being shut down for COVID. We were on pace for about seventeen hundred files. So another increase of a hundred. We're looking at a continued increase of workload within the legal department. Which I attribute largely to the change in administration and the change of work pace throughout the city. We are getting a lot more done in a lot of departments. And so the legal department is just feeling that crunch come down our direction as well. James, the next slide. I want to talk a little bit about the efficiency measures that we've tried to use in the past to address those things. Um, I'll talk on the next slide a little bit about the horizontal reorganization of the department. But I reorganized the workflows within the department back in about twenty thirteen. To try to handle that higher workflow and you're going to see how I've worked with the people that I have in my department to spread that workflow in a way that can be handled efficiently. We've also worked very hard to incorporate electronic workflow measures. All of our public information act requests come in primarily through a website form and they are handled electronically. And that reduces the amount of time that we spend standing over a copy machine or with a black Sharpie marker in our hand. Trying to manage those documents and that has helped a lot as well. Uh, we also implemented an online practice management solution called Clio. So all of our files are stored in the cloud and can be accessed from anywhere. Not only is that more efficient than the five different software solutions we were using to handle our workflow before. But it also has come in tremendously handy through this COVID response. I can tell you that my staff is almost entirely working from home right now eh, eh, because of COVID. And almost all of the workflow can be handled remotely because we implemented Clio two years ago. This year, as you know, we also implemented the iComfort agenda management solution. And that has also reduced the workflow primarily at the staff level. One of Katie's primary work jobs was to handle the preparation of the council agenda. And we've seen a significant streamlining of that process over the last six months, nine months. That software solution also includes a basic public information act management solution that we are currently implementing. It's the last of the modules that we are rolling out. Um, that got delayed a little bit because of the COVID shutdown of the city. But we anticipate that that is going to additionally streamline some more of the staff side workflows. James, you can go to the next slide. So what we're, what I want to show you on this slide is what I mean by a horizontal workflow in our department. This table shows two years worth of data. And the column labels across the top, you can see are each of the department within the city. And the row labels down the left-hand side are the different types of workflow that we have in each of those departments. So the top row is general legal advice. Below that is litigation matters. Thankfully, we don't have any of those. Below that are contracts, both, and, and that blue band is split whether those need to come to coun- to council for approval or whether they can be approved by the city manager. And then you have a broad band of light blue there. That includes city council agenda items, sales tax agenda items, public information requests and subpoenas. And that is largely Katie Connolly's workflow. That plus the hot funds process that our department handled. That workflow is large, but it has, that has been one of the primary focuses of our streamlining through electronic resources. And over the course of the last year, we've actually seen that workflow decline because of the efficiencies that we've been able to generate. And, and so I'm looking at a situation where the workflow is getting heavier on the attorneys. And we've been able to address it more efficiently on the staff side. And so it simply doesn't make sense for me to replace a staff position with another staff position. I need to replace that staff with an attorney. Next slide, James, I'm going to show you how, what my proposal is. Essentially, it's two steps. First, I'm going to backfill Katie's position with a second assistant city attorney. That's going to provide us the additional staff resources where we need them at the attorney level. Rather than simply trying to continue on with what we were doing. And second, once I have that second attorney in-house. I can take over the prosecution services in municipal court that we currently have outsourced on a part-time contract basis. And so I'm going to use that contract funds to partially offset the cost increase of bringing that position in-house. Once we've done that and I've hired that person, I'm going to reorganize those workflows vertically. To provide more assistance to the individual departments. James, you can go to the next slide. This is what a vertical workflow looks like. This is the same data table that you were looking at before, but you see the shading now goes in vertical bars instead of horizontal rows. And what this represents is each department having an attorney assigned to that department that handles their legal work soup to nuts. That horizontal band that you saw earlier was really good at allowing me to take advantage of the high level of skills that Katie had in our department. But when you view that same workflow from the perspective of the individual department heads. It wasn't terribly efficient for them. If they had a legal question, they called over here, they were talking to me about it. If that same question turned into a contract, they were talking to Allison about it. And when that contract had to go on a council agenda, it was Katie who was writing that resolution. And so consequently, the departments felt very disjointed. By reorganizing vertically, we're going to be able to benefit from the synergies of having a single attorney assigned to each department. But it's even better than that. If you look at the three columns on the far right, those are labeled D E V, P O L and M U N. That's Development Services, the Police Department and Municipal Court. Those are the three departments that are most using the current prosecutor. If I assign that assistant attorney to be the prosecutor and the police department's attorney. Then you have an opportunity to develop, to build that relationship with the police officers out in the field. To work with them one-on-one with the cases that they're working. And more importantly, something that you may not be thinking about is code enforcement. I want the prosecutor to develop a close working relationship with the code enforcement officers. In order to help that department more efficiently manage their caseload. I think there are a lot of things that we could be doing. Once we have an attorney who's actually on staff every day of the week. That can help that department get those cases processed through more quickly. James, you can go to the next slide. Here's the money, what's it going to cost? This is an update of the slide that you saw when Mr. Garza initially presented budgets. You'll remember he presented my department budget because there wasn't much of a change in my department at that time. Now there is. And so this slide updates it. And the entire change takes place in the first line, personnel and benefits. Because I don't have to build a new office, I don't have to buy furniture, I'm just hiring someone and putting them into an existing location. So what you're seeing now is the variance from last year's budget in the upper right-hand corner, ninety-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That's the difference from what my budget was last year. That is not the cost of this proposal. To get to the cost of this proposal, you need to back out of that. What was in that line when Mr. Garza presented it to you a, a month or so ago, which was eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Associated with healthcare premium contributions. So you take the ninety-three and you back out the eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. And also subtract from that number, the twenty-six thousand dollars that we're currently paying the outside prosecutor. And what you wind up with is the total cost of this proposal to the city is fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Just shy of fifty-six thousand dollars. James, you can go to the next slide. That's my proposal, Mayor and Council. All of those numbers I understand are already reflected in the budget that's going to be presented tonight. Um, and so if that budget is approved, moving forward.
Mr. Goose.
You got a question? I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, it's a mayor. Uh, quick question. As, as you know, from the very first meeting that attended. You know, I, I, I wanted to see kind of a, a, a change in the way of our procurement. I know that's primarily rest within the purchasing department. The, the fact that you have more attorneys uh, aligned here. Uh, do, do you still see moving forward with uh, uh, moving to different types of procurement? And especially uh, really looking more deeply into the contracts that we do a lot of our capital programs. To uh, make sure that we uh, we uh, have accountability in there. Relative time and, and things like that in our contracting. Is this, does this allow, have more legal, actually legal uh, time to devote to that sort of thing? Without being draconian, I know contracts can be draconian and uh, oppressive in many ways. But I'm just talking about them covering the bases more thorough.
You're absolutely right, Mayor, and, and thank you for asking the question. You're right that that workflow is handled primarily through the purchasing department. When it comes to selecting what type of procurement method is going to be used. But the legal department is involved in approving the actual contract that gets executed at the end of that process. We largely work off of form documents that have been prepared by outside counsel just this year. That process should be improving as you see projects come forward, you should see bad contracts coming forward. But I also thank you for asking the question because it allows me to point to a, another number. The number is a hundred and seventy-three. That number comes from the Association of Corporate Counsel's annual survey of in-house lawyers globally. And that is the average number of contracts per year that an in-house attorney handles. Does that make sense? A hundred and seventy-three contracts a year is the global average for in-house attorneys. Last year, Allison's number, well, over the last two years, Allison's average was not a hundred and seventy-three, it was two hundred and ninety-seven. We are significantly higher-paced workflow in this office than average around the world. You remember me talking about efficiency measures? I recognize that our contract process is not to the standards that you want to see right now. The biggest reason for that is because our focus has been on managing the workflow through efficiency measures. That means sometimes that our contracts are more simplistic than you might otherwise see in other places. By adding another assistant city attorney, I do hope to address that issue and I hope that you will see that change.
Well, it's just being more and more complex. I mean, with every uh, session of the legislature and when you look at all the changes. And all of the things that happen uh, in the T M L updates, I mean, it's, it's a daunting task. To stay up with it all and it's not getting less work, it's getting more and more work. That requires legal, uh, I don't want to say intervention, but legal analysis. Uh, to keep us up to, up to uh, where we need to be. And, and that's what I would hope. I'm sure that, that you, you focus on that sort of goal in mind.
Thank you. Yes, yes, sir, we will. Additionally, I want to thank the city mayor, Mr. Garza. There has been a concerted focus on reexamining the workload of the legal department. You noticed that the hot funds committee got moved out of my department over to the C V B. I think that's a good move, both because that's probably where it needs to be. The Convention and Visitors Bureau needs to be working that tourism advisory board to establish that process. I think that's a good move. But also it is one element of Mr. Garza's examination of the workflow. And some of the things that the legal department historically has done in Victoria. Aren't the same kind of workflow that you would see in other cities. And so we may continue to see some process transitions. But moving things like C V B uh, work back to C V B has been a huge help to us as well.
Thank you. You know, the question for Mr. Goose?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I will, I will be bringing an item back to you eventually, once I do the hiring process, which I'd like to start very soon. So that that position can start at the beginning of the fiscal year. I'll have to bring back to you a resolution to appoint that assistant city attorney. The city charter says that council approves my hiring of an assistant city attorney. And so you'll see this come back to you and I'll be looking forward to introducing a new city, uh, assistant city attorney uh, at some point in the future.
Thank you. And that, I guess.
So Mayor, next, next up, we have Gilbert is going to take the lead on um, summarizing the certified tax rule. Which is still within the city manager report part of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Raina. Mayor, Council, good evening. I'll talk to y'all. Uh, James, you're moving this slide for me, okay, because I'm not doing it at all. So you go to the next slide. I'm not going to bombard you with a lot of numbers, I just can give you the takeaways to know it. As you can see, the certified tax rule increased from last year about two point four percent. And you can do the simple math, the biggest areas of increase and decrease, you can tell residential, which is two point nine billion, went up by four point six. And of course, the commercial industry went down by one point five, which makes up another one point five billion. Those two categories influence the whole certified tax rule to extent. Now, when you go down to the bottom, you take, you add your protests, you take out your frozen property. With it, a number called net tax or price value. But that number is, is actually the block. What that number is, is actually the bulk of the revenue that is generated for the general fund and net service. And that increase, after you do all the math, you only go about one-point-one percent increase from last year. Like Mr. Garza said, there's hardly any increase at all. And to go dive a little further in to see about that one percent increase, the overall net increase is about forty-point-five million dollars. I mean, yeah, forty, forty-point-five million, upwards, twenty-seven-point-five is from new property, meaning there never been a price before, and that brings about ninety-eight thousand dollars in revenue. But the kicker here, you can notice that your frozen increased by thirty-five million, meaning that our population and senior citizens, and nothing against it, frozen is growing every year, anywhere from three to five percent on a given year. And then the biggest part of it is the old valuation, which of course picks up the difference, which, you know, another house been reevaluated because of where the case might be at the market. So that makes up the total four-point-five million dollars. Next slide. And one way to look at this is the graph side. As you can tell from the residential side, from fiscal year, from tax rule twenty-fifteen all the way to twenty-twenty, you notice that residential has been gradually increasing. However, if you look at the commercial side, same timeframe, it's going the opposite. It's kind of weird. You know, you would think that, well, if you have an increase in residential, you might have an increase in economy base, you might have an increase in commercial. Here you don't. You've got the opposite. And the main reason of this is happening because the philosophy that the appraisal is using, how they tax these business commercial, and we've been looking at it later, we've been exploring it, but that's the only reason they explain why we have an opposite direction going in. To me, it makes sense. If you're going up, you should have your commercial going up as well. In this case, we don't have that situation. That's, in a nutshell, the Certified Tax Rule, ladies and gentlemen.
Gilbert, if I may, I want to add a couple of points.
You go right ahead.
One on the frozen. So for context, the frozen values in twenty-twone are close to seven-hundred-and-fifty million. Ten years ago, in two thousand and eleven, they were four-hundred-and-thirty-seven million. And so that number is increasing fast. And each year, that percentage growth is just growing, growing, growing. And obviously, it's great that values are being frozen, but it's something that we need to be conscious of from an economic and community development standpoint, because we also don't want to continue for our population to get older, and it impacts our revenues. And so even more reason for us to focus on attracting younger folks to our community. The other thing, too, that I want to add is that you might have noted on the bar graph that the bar for exempt property has gone up. So James, I don't know if you can go back to the previous slide real quick, but you notice at the bottom right that exempt property has gone up. And so this is another thing that I think is another educational opportunity for our community members and leaders in that whenever we're going to have the redevelopment of property that's on the tax rules, that we need to be a little smart about how we go about it in terms of being involved to maximize our revenue. Because, for instance, those bars are up because of the old mall being bought out by a church and a university, by, you know, an old movie theater being taken over by the Children's Museum, you know. And so some of these redevelopment opportunities, while they're great, they can impact our revenues as well. And so those exempt properties are going up. So those are just some food for thought elements associated with trends with our tax rule. Happy to answer any questions that you might have associated with the tax rule for either Gilbert or myself.
Could you go back to the first slide? I think it was the first slide. Special inventory.
What is special inventory? Special inventory is basically inventory is a key word here. You might have some big equipment that are for resale sale, that's inventory. That follows in that category. Every property is classified with a specific state code. And special inventory is an example of like vehicles, boats for resale, houses that are completed and have not been sold, they just still has inventory. That fits that category. And every year goes up or down, depends on the end of the year. Sometimes you can see a huge sale on cars because they don't want to pay taxes, blah, blah, blah. Well, in this case, a little different. It's not, this is not our thing because, as you well, we had, you know, epidemic going on. So I can see why inventory has gone up in this situation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no additional questions, this isn't, this is an action item. This is just a report on our Certified Tax Rule.
If there's no further questions from Council, then I think we will move into action items for Council. Mr. Gu, item F1.
Item F1 is to schedule public hearings on the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget.
Council, the purpose of this resolution is that we need to schedule a public hearing and of course, the reading of the budget at a set date, and those dates is August the twenty-seventh and September the first of this calendar year at five o'clock at Council Chambers.
I move we approve item F1.
I second.
And I have a motion and a sec to approve item F1. Do I have any discussion? You know, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, no.
Mayor, item F2 is a resolution to propose the tax rate, schedule public hearings, and schedule a vote to adopt the tax rate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
I move we accept.
Second. Second.
There's a motion. Do we want to hear the report first?
We got a little quick presentation, Asus.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion and a second on the table?
Yes.
Mr. Bogdan, I get a motion for it.
No. And Andrew seconded it.
So I guess we'll go into discussion, and in that discussion, can you please present your report, Mr. Garza?
Sir Gilbert will kick it off.
Thank you. Next slide. James, you know, as you well know, this past year, the tax rate code went through a huge overhaul by the S B two, which is known as S B two. And we thought maybe we just give you a quick highlight of some of the terminology that's being used, and we're still getting used to them, folks. So, oh, Council, excuse me. And so don't be surprised if we still kind of fall back on the old language. It's going to be a time before we get to the new language repetitive. But basically, the highlights of this S B two is that, as you remember, the effective tax rate, which is basically the amount that you would generate from previous year based on this tax rate, is now called no new revenue tax rate. Very creative. The other one, the rollback, which is the maximum amount of the tax rate can be set without going through an election, now it's called voter approval tax rate. Now, as you recall in prior years, there was a, the state law allowed a city to go up eight percent of the M and O effective tax rate, but the city had an ordinance in place, we went up on five percent. Well, all that goes away now. Now, the maximum now is a three-and-a-half percent on top of the effective M and O tax rate, plus unused incremental rate. I'll explain that in a minute. Well, I'll explain now. Basically, what it is, is that in order, there was a compromise, is that, okay, we'll allow, if you don't use your full three-and-a-half percent one year, we're allowed to use that as a carryover to next year's tax rate. In other words, if next year comes around, you calculate your voter tax approval, and if you don't use your three-and-a-half, you're allowed to add that three-and-a-half to next year's voters approval. Does that make sense? So that's a compromise, and that's allowed now. Now, one thing that they, if you do go over that three-and-a-half threshold, you're required to have an election in November. Now, in order to do that, you have to have a budget passed by maybe the first, second week of August because there's seventy-five, seventy-nine day threshold, you've got to submit everything into the state. So that made it pretty hard for anybody who wants to increase the tax rate, because it's going to be pretty darn hard to do. Overall, the only good thing for the cities is that we're allowed to bank the carryover. And I'll show you a graph how that works in the next slide. Hopefully, in the future, I don't have to do this, but I thought the first time around, I'll show the mechanics of it, and there's a lot of math. First of all, first year, you have a no new rate effective tax rate of sixty-one, twenty-two. Voters approval tax rate, the maximum level you can go to is six-two, oh, wait. The proposed tax rate to the manager puzzle right now is sixty-one, fifteen, which is the same rate as last year, which is also less than the actual effective tax rate. Now, the carryover, how's that work? Well, you'll compare your voter approval tax rate with sixty, oh, eight. Compare that to the proposed tax rate, you have a difference of point zero, zero, nine, three. What that allows you to do is that you can take that, you're not using the whole three-and-a-half increase on M and O effective tax rates, but you're allowed to carry over that part to next year, and add that part to next year's voter tax approval to get the maximum number before you call an election. To work it downward, a different way to look at it, how you come up with three-and-a-half, you have your voter approval tax rate, and you got your proposed tax rate. Both of those numbers have a debt tax rate that's all the same. That's the number I need to generate enough cash to pay debt. If you take that number out, you end up with your, of course, M and O tax rate. On the voter's approval rate, you got point three, seven, five, oh. On the proposal, it's thirty-six, fifty-eight. Again, you got a difference of point zero, zero, nine, three. But the deal is this, the effective M and O tax rate, when you do a calculation to generate the same number of maintenance and operating revenue, it comes up with thirty-six, twenty-five. If you take that thirty-six, twenty-five, subtract it off the M and O that you see on top, you don't have a difference on the bottom, on the left-hand side of zero, one, two, six, and the other one's point zero, three, three. That is, that zero, one, two, three is actually a three-and-a-half percent that you allow. So what, another way of saying this, the state is allowing you to go up about one-point-two-six cents on top of your debt tax rate. But if you can see here, we're only using point zero, zero, three, three of the full three-point-five. So actually, I'm using only point ninety-one percent of the increase, so I'm allowed to carry over to two-point-six, or another way to say it, point zero, zero, nine, three. I know I'm going a long way from a mathematician type of view, but I wanted you to make sure you understand the flow of it because this gets kind of confusing with new terminology. And I think the City Manager will go into more details about the revenue side of it.
So does that mean, Mr. Raina, you can go to a six-point-one rate in a year?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Mayor? Does that mean you can go to a six-point-one percent in a year?
Six-point-one.
Adding your difference, your carryover tax rate?
If you, and next year, you can take that point zero, nine, three and add it to next year's voters approval, and that'd be your maximum amount that you can stretch a tax rate at. Does that make sense, Mayor?
It would be what overall percent?
So.
Yeah, Gilbert. Gilbert, I think his question is, next year, is it as simple as adding three-point-five to two-point-six?
Oh, no, it's not as simple as that.
Correct.
I never think it is ever simple, but.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor. You know, the percentage of the saving, what you need to focus is on the actual dollar amount.
And that generates how much money?
Right. And so, James, if you go to the next slide, this is just figures. And so, for instance, if we were to go the approval tax rate, or what was used to be called the the rollback rate, we would generate close to eight-hundred thousand dollars. With the proposed tax rate, which is what the budget is built off of, we're gaining about four-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand. So what we're sort of leaving on the table, if we want to use that terminology, would be roughly three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. And so the question for Council is, obviously, it's your decision. Do you keep the existing tax rate? Do you keep the door open to go up to the point six-two-zero-eight and have a conversation on how we may be able to use the three-hundred-and-thirty-seven at a future meeting? That's obviously your decision, but we wanted to make sure that you all, that you understood the options, for lack of a better word, and that you also had a sense from us as to what our priority would be if you did have that conversation, which, as I mentioned earlier, would be to try and explore an option to fund a Phase One of that compensation study, which would probably recommend the majority of it focusing on public safety to make some of that increased funds that they're getting this year through hazard pay more of a permanent thing. Obviously, the Hazard Pay Program will help as a one-time, but we know that we need some permanent work to do so that we can actually fill our vacancies within the Police Department and not lose any more folks. But a hundred percent up to Council. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. I do have one more slide, James. I know in my briefing with the mayor, he wanted us to make it a point to mention or to include how much more it would be if you did consider that approval tax rate of points, point six, two, zero, eight. And so similar to this table that we presented last year, when Council did have a conversation about gaining more revenue through property tax, you see that for an appraised value of two-hundred thousand, that equates to roughly forty-five dollars annual increase, or for a property three-hundred thousand, it's about sixty-seven dollars annually. And so, as I mentioned, happy to answer any questions that you may have associated with the tax rate.
Now that, any discussion from Council specifically?
Well, I guess we were at this point last year and had a discussion that if we tonight approved the point six, one, one, five, we could go down from that, but we could go up without changing dates of the hearings. But if we instead approved the rate point six-two, oh, eight tonight, we wouldn't, again, we could go down. But we wouldn't have to change the dates moving forward.
That is correct. That is, that's correct.
I'm fine with leaving it just like it's presented.
I'm ready to whatever Council wishes on this. I did want the numbers presented. What we learned tonight shows the task before us. We somehow had to turn around this decline in in commercial properties. It just, to me, accelerates the need to really get aggressive about economic growth because if we don't grow this tax base on the commercial side, I think everybody can see where we're heading in terms of funding future projects and stuff. I think I'm kind of leaning toward if we could carry some of this over to get through this year the best we can and see what it is. But really, I think we're going to have to have some serious discussion next year on how these trends are going and what we need to do to promote growth in our tax base. Because to me, that's the key out of this thing. And I think we're attacking it on a lot more fronts in trying to increase retail participation to get our sales tax back up. We won't know that until we see, probably after the first of the year. So that's kind of where I am, but I just want everybody to see the actual dollar amounts, just like last year. It's not as much as you would think. But I think everybody can start seeing the long-term problem that we need to traverse.
If you go back one slide. Please. One more. Yeah, let me see. I want the slide with the difference would be.
I want the slide with, with the difference would be if we went up. I don't know what slide that is. Now, I'll go back. Uh, it was the one. It's the one with the sky items on it.
Go forward.
Yeah, forward one, there. It's four hundred and sixty eight thousand if we went all the way up, right? From the current.
I didn't hear your question, council member. Can you repeat that?
If we went to sixty two oh eight, the proposed rate, how much additional three thirty seven or four sixty two?
So the, so the proposed, the, the rate that's proposed currently in the budget is the point six one one five, which is already accounting for that four sixty two. So that four sixty two is already accounted for in the proposed budget that was submitted, keeping the tax rate the same. If you were to go up.
Yeah.
If you were to go up to the point six two zero eight, that would be an additional three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. So the conversations about, you know, what to do if we did do it would be centered around the three hundred and thirty seven thousand number.
Well, I'd like to know how much the step program, reinstituting this program would cost.
So, I'm not sure how familiar council is with the step program, but the step program is focused on our frontline, uniformed, fully licensed law enforcement officers and firefighters. And so it doesn't account for some of the command staff level folks. If we were to fund a step program for them, um, that figure would be roughly four hundred thousand dollars for both police and fire. Um, now, again, that doesn't account for some of the command level folks within a department because those positions aren't necessarily included in the step. Historically, when the city has funded a step program, the city has also funded across the board pay increases for the individuals that are outside of the step. So once you add that, um, that cost has ranged between six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. Now, one of the things that um uh we have thought of, assuming council wanted to have the conversation, was taking those figures and just taking seventy five percent of them. Because we do have this hazard pay program that's gonna run through the end of December. And so we could theoretically only fund seventy five percent of a step pro, of a step or any, or, or whatever pay program we want to do, because we could theoretically start it in January without any issues. The hazard pay program runs through the end of the calendar year. So that, that might, that might make it a little more uh, you know, more doable. And obviously, if that's the desire of council to, for funding a step, you know, and it necessitates us having to make cuts in other areas in order to do that, well, obviously, we could go back and, and do that and, and uh and find some kind of compromise um in order to do that.
Do you think your compensation study is going to uh in terms of first responders result in a step-type program or a different type of, of uh way of funding? First responder.
That's a great question. That's a great question. I, I, I think our approach currently is to maintain a version of a step program. Um, I think it's better for employees, whether they're law enforcement or, or not, to very clearly pay per C sort of those next steps. Um, and so we are, we would be working off of a version of the step program. Um, there are some elements to the step program though that would have to be completely uh changed as, because of the compensation study. Uh, as an example, I mentioned that currently command staff level folks aren't included in a step program, but we fund an increase for them anyway whenever we do it. So we might as well just incorporate or develop a step program that already accounts for that. And so that we just call a spade a spade and we just, you know, have it all laid out. Obviously, the pay in terms of beginning pay and the different steps will be reassessed as part of the uh, as part of the study. But we already know that we're behind in some of these elements. So even if we did fund this step, that wouldn't interfere with whatever recommendation comes out of the compensation study because they're already behind, so it would just be kind of helping the cause, I suppose. Um, we are trying to work with our consultant um to prioritize providing information to us on police and fire. Uh, just in anticipation of potentially council wanting to have that conversation. And so if you did, um, I guess tonight, vote on the higher tax rate to allow for that conversation, we would be more prepared to share some of those details next week. Maybe not specifically what a new step program would look like, that, that's gonna take some time. But at minimum, share with you what the comp analysis says in terms of where we are compared to Mark and even share some examples with you on starting pay in other places versus here and, and things of that sort.
This is Ricky. Would it be to say that a lot of our police officers um leave because of the pay, the insurance cost and and the compensation uh being a, a, a lower compared to other cities?
I think that's a big part of it. You know, a lot of what we, every employee that leaves the organization goes through an exit interview. And without a doubt, the exit interview, um, not just with police and fire, but in general typically boils down to um, two or three things, of which two of those three things typically are the health insurance and actual compensation. Um, so we know that that's, that's definitely um, one of the re, one, or a couple of the reasons. But we also can't lose sight of the fact that we also have um younger folks within those departments that regardless of pay, you know, aspire to be in a large metro community. Um, and so, you know, there's some, some of that going on as well.
I firmly agree that we need to uh, uh, look at this seriously. If, if there's ever been a time that we need to look at this to support our fire department and police department, you know, now is the time.
Is there any other comments from council in the session of the men on the floor?
I agree with Ricky.
Well, I would have to entertain then it would probably take an amendment, a motion to amend the motion on the floor if we're to consider the higher rate.
I, I move that we uh amend the motion to adopt a tax rate of six two oh eight.
I second.
Right, there's a motion on the floor to amend uh the uh previous motion to adopt the higher rate of six point two oh eight with the understanding it just allows us to discuss it later. So is there any discussion on the?
Just want to be clear that that was point six two eight, not six two oh eight. Point six two oh eight. You said six point two oh eight.
Trying to look through my.
Yeah.
High focal at this screen. So it is for point six two eight. Is there any further discussion on the?
Okay, I have a question. If we vote for the higher rate, we can't go back to the six one five. That's it tonight?
You can, you can. And you can even go lower if you want later.
Cause you know, I'm thinking about your count and I don't want to mess it up. I was just, and last year when we did the, when we went up last year, the three point five percent, didn't we use something for one time um expenses recurring? This will become a recurring uh expense.
Correct. That, that's an excellent point. You're absolutely correct. Last year when we uh, last year was not three and a half, it was five percent. Um, because at the time SB two hadn't come into play. But one of the things that helped last year was that even getting five percent in additional revenue still kept us below the effective tax rate. And so I think that helped facilitate the conversation. But you're right in that the majority of the loans were utilized in one-time expenditures. Um, specifically, we utilized them to, it was about two hundred thousand dollars were used for some patchwork for some streets. Um, we also, I think a part of that was also for the uh, a pro patcher, because we added a third crew for pot hole crew. Um, and so there was some expenses associated with that. And you are correct in that um, if we did go down the path of spending the three hundred and thirty seven dollars on a compensation program, that it would be a recurring expense as opposed to a one-time.
I have a question. Could you say again what that percentage was that we increased the rate later?
Five percent.
So last year, it wasn't the rate that we increased, it was our revenue. And so we increased our property tax revenue by five percent last year, but actually lowered the property tax rate because the assessed value uh had come in at a higher level compared to like eighteen. Um, and so the. I'm sorry?
Well, below the effective rate?
Last year?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, you're kind of breaking out.
Were we below the effective rest year?
Nope, can I?
No, Gilbert, you want to chime in?
Yeah.
We were.
The last year, uh, the, the proposed tax rate last year was sixty one fifteen. That was last year's, what you call the rollback tax rate. It's a max. So we went up from uh, we came in at a lower rate, but we went up to the, to the max of a five percent, which is sixty one fifteen. That's last year's. That's last year's rollback number.
And then?
Mister Bottnight's question is, was it still below the effective rate at the time?
No, no, no. Last year's, the sixty one fifteen was above the effective tax rate last year.
Do you know what percentage that was?
Oh, I gotta look it up, sir. I'll give uh.
Where I'm going with the quote is, we raised taxes last year. Now we're proposing to raise it again this year. I just, I don't think this is the right year. And I don't, I'm not saying I'm against of what uh Mister De La Garza is saying on where to spend that money if we were to raise it, but I think that it's just the wrong year to be doing it. Yeah, well, what's the unemployment rate in Victoria right now?
It's a little over ten percent.
Yeah. Everybody's just kind of in a wait and hold uh status on COVID vaccine or when we can really get everything rolling economy-wise. You got a bunch of people that are, you know, still unemployed and still questionable on whether other businesses are gonna make it. Um, I just, I, I think it's not the right time to try and increase the, the tax rate.
I think that maybe we wait till next year and maybe we can, if, if everything goes better, we can, you know, uh, piggyback on it and add the two point six to the three five and maybe get a better, you know, outcome.
If we want to prioritize doing something, seventy five percent step plus staff and police and fire, let, let's go look at what we're spending already and cut them back somewhere and, and fund it through that.
Yeah, I can, I, I can, um, it kills me uh to do that, but understanding to your being uh, odd COVID and particularly uh with, with Mister Garza said about the uh double-digit unemployment rate, which is normally at five percent, so around here, it's at least double what it normally is. Yeah, I, I, a year ago today, it was a little shy of four percent. Okay, yeah. Um, I've got grave concerns in that it certainly won't fix everything, but um, what I would like to see is um, the commercial uh uh, property values trend in the uh similar section that residential. Uh, I just find that very odd.
Well, I, I see, I think I see the uh willingness of the, the council to, to really look into that compensation, whether we do it uh with tax or whether we do it with savings. I think, I think there's a general consensus that we really need to look into it. And uh, so I think that's, that's positive message either way it goes. Uh, but we do have a mode on the amendment now, and I will call uh for the vote the amendment raising the six one one five, two point six two oh eight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, is there a count on those? I can't tell who all voted.
Do a roll call.
Yeah, April, if you wouldn't mind doing a roll call.
Sure. Councilman De La Garza? Councilman, uh, or Mayor Pro Tim Solis?
Nay.
And Councilman Bottnight?
Nay.
Councilwoman Scott?
Aye.
Councilman Young? I'm sorry, I couldn't understand yours.
Nay.
Thank you. And Councilman Lofgren?
Aye.
And Mayor Solis, or Mayor McCoy, I'm sorry.
Well, this is, it pains me. I think it's, uh, it probably is not the time uh, to raise it. Uh, I think explanation to the community would be difficult. But I, I'm gonna vote nay on the amendment, and I hope to encourage council. Let's work very hard to find that three hundred and thirty three uh thousand dollars, three, three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars and try to do something with our compensation for our first responder. But I would have to vote aye. So now, onto the uh motion on the floor, setting the tax rate at point six one one five. Any discussion on that?
Mayor, if, if you don't mind me kind of just making a couple of comments, because I want to make sure I understand the direction. Um, so if I'm catch, if I'm, if I captured your, your comment correct, um, would, it sounds like council would like to us to, in essence, develop a budget that trims other elements in the budget potentially fund at least a portion of the step? Am I kind of capturing that right? Is that the expectation that, that uh that council has?
I personally would like to see an attempt. I truly would. A good honest attempt at it. Because uh, I've said it before and I'll say it again, uh of the, the, the first responders in our community, uh, almost look at them as infrastructure. They, they're so vital to our community and saw uh everything that they did during the continue to do through it. I just think we need to work a direction to do by them. And eventually with this compensation study, start, embark on a process doing right by all of our MPs in the city. It's a tough year uh, right now. But I think, I think should make the effort to see what you do to do what we can. Uh, because in a, in, in a budget of a hundred and forty million dollars, we should really be able to find three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars somewhere.
True, but keep in mind that the actual budget where this money can come from is not that. You know, the budget where this would come from is from our general fund, and so I don't think it's accurate to convey finding three thirty seven out of a hundred and forty six million. Um, but I get your point though.
You're gonna add to it, the three thirty seven.
Yeah, I, I get what you meant though.
All right. Okay, having said that, are there any further discussion on the setting the tax rate at point six one one five? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side. And thank you, council, for a, a great discussion there.
There is one more item on the agenda tonight, Mayor, and that is to authorize the publication of the notice of meeting on a vote on tax rate.
I move that we approve item F three.
I second it.
I second it.
If there's a motion and a second to approve item three, all those in, uh, uh, need, any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. I think that pretty much concludes this tonight. I think there was an executive section listed, but I don't think that's necessary tonight.
Correct, it's not necessary.
So I believe we can stand adjourned.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Thanks, y'all. Good night.
Night. Bye.